Is the GIS Downtown Digital Model. Are you the digital model?
I don't even know how to answer that, Mayor.
Okay.
There are so many ways to answer that. Uh, no, the real answer to that is no. Uh, our, our GIS professionals have the skills and expertise to show you said, uh, digital model, sometimes referred to as a digital twin. Uh, we, but, but we had the opportunity to work with them on this. To, we were, we were sort of the impetus of that work. Erin Olson-Douglas, uh, Development Services Director. We, about three, three and a half years ago, as we were completing the, uh, the update to our zoning code, we recognized that we needed to look hard at the zoning requirements in the East Village, in the area that we now know as the Market District. We were getting some development pressure. And in our zoning code, we had basically kept the heights the same as what we had had previous uh, in our, in our capital dominance overlay. And we knew that over time, we were getting development pressure in this area. And so, we wanted to first maintain the view, the views to the Capitol throughout this area. That was an important cultural aspect of our, of our downtown. But we knew that there were areas where perhaps we could have taller heights. So, we were looking for a way to create a digital model such that we could model the higher heights in certain areas. We went out to the private sector, had some good conversations with people who probably could have accomplished this for us. It would have been an expensive endeavor. In our, in our work with our own IT department, the topic came up and they said, "Well, we believe that GIS is headed towards, um, three-dimensional capabilities." It has that capabilities now, uh, but the platform is not really used in that way. And we believe that that's the way it's headed. This would give us a good way to build our capacity in-house such that as that three-dimensional world, um, comes forward, we're able to work with it. And so, um, we, we thought it was great. We thought it would be super to have this capability in-house, to have the data in-house. And, um, our, our GIS folks had a way of looking at it such that it would be highly detailed and very, um, very realistic in that it would capture the topography, which is one of the important aspects of the, of the Capitol grounds and maintaining the views to the Capitol. So, we moved forward with them. Um, they did all the work. We, we basically worked with them in order that we had the capability to test the views as we brought forward zoning proposals to the Plan and Zoning Commission and ultimately to City Council. But they were the ones, uh, working on the, on the details of it and the technology of it and building that ability in-house. And they probably won't toot their own horns, so I, I will do that on their behalf. Um, they, for this work, were recognized recently, uh, earlier this summer, with an international ESRI award, which is the, which is the company that, or the, the, um, entity that hosts the GIS, Geographic Information Systems, for, for everybody for across the countries and across the world, really. So, a lot of cities, most cities have GIS capabilities, but we really have outstanding staff who are able to manipulate this information, make it useful in a lot of ways. I know the next presentation you have relies on their expertise as well. We really all do in a lot of, in a lot of the work we do. So, um, it was, it was, uh, this, in particular, this digital model was recognized for its, um, its progressiveness and the way that it really leads the industry into this three-dimensional, uh, capability. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Erin Greiner and he, and Eric Bronner, who can talk more specifically about how the model came together and what it does.
Morning. Thank you. I'm Erin Greiner. I am in GIS in the IT department. With me is Eric Bronner. He's the brains behind the whole thing. Thank you for inviting us this morning. As Erin said, it was a group effort. Her team bought into our idea that we could do this. We had never done anything like it before. And, um, without her kind of trust and, and belief in that, it wouldn't have happened, even with the skill sets we had in-house, IT and GIS. So, what we did for the, uh, the project is we hired a company to fly what's called LiDAR. And I don't know if you all have heard of LiDAR, are familiar with it, but they take an airplane and they fly over the city and they shoot down lasers. Not lasers that can hurt your eyes. You can't see them, so no worries there. That was a question. Um, and what it does is each time it hits an object on the earth, it returns a point. So it bounces off and reflects back. And when it does that, it says, "Hey, this is the surface. It's at this location and this elevation." And then it's actually what type of thing it's hitting to. Hey, this is wood. This is metal. This is concrete. This is water. And from that, we take all these points and, and the software and Eric's expertise here, and we built the surface of the earth so we could see the water and kind of the lay of the land for downtown. It also included information that on buildings. And Eric's going to show this to you with the point cloud, it's called. And it's all these points and they kind of start to represent those dots that make up the building. It's really cool stuff. It's very progressive, um, and it's very neat. Once we have that, then we have highly accurate elevation data that we can get the topography, that we can get the slope of the hill from the Capitol down to Principal Park. And we also have elevations on buildings and the tops of the buildings and their sides and their very precise locations. And we can extrude, build virtual buildings using that data. It's, um, it's, it's, as Erin said, it's the future of GIS. Uh, the 3D modeling, um, we started this about three years ago and then it was starting to come into its own. Now it's everywhere. And as, uh, Eric and I were at the ESRI conference this summer to receive the award. And, um, it's just, everybody's using it everywhere. So, their trust in us to build this has now created a dataset that we have in-house, which is extremely valuable for other projects in the future. Not just the modeling and the digital twin, but Parks is already looking at it for, looking at shadow impacts on their parks or where they might plant, um, a public garden, for instance. Um, there's inventory work that can be done for utilities, signs, different things like that. So, the future is huge and this gets us to kind of the building blocks we need to get there. So with that, I'll turn it over to Eric and he'll show you the, the point cloud and then he'll demonstrate the application we built so they can look at the digital twin and they can see how new things could possibly impact the environment.
All right. So this is the initial application of the model that we extracted from LiDAR. So as you can see, there's first buildings. I'll remove those for now so I can show you the point cloud. If you've never seen one, this is what it looks like to show the elevation differences in the points. So you can see the lower elevations are the cooler colors, blues. And then as it rises, you can see the tops of the buildings are high trees are red. If we zoom in, you can see these are all actual individual points that define sometimes the side depending on how the radar was oriented as the plane passed through. Uh, but mostly it's for the rooftop and surface areas. And so you can see it collects in very high detail all of the elements of the roof structure and some of the surrounding building on the side. And then you can even get trees and light poles as well. So you can see the top of that light over the streetlight and you can see the individual tree in the surrounding area. Um, so from this, like Erin was saying, we can drive not only the surface situation, we can also derive what's above the surface. So what's a, um, digital surface model captures everything, the ground and the above structures. So you can take all the heights out of that. So you could define all your tree heights, your tree widths and everything. So it's important to, you know, other departments as well. We can show you then. You can also colorize it using our aerial imagery so you could get an even better picture of what's surrounding the area. And then from that, we can use that to define the boundaries and build out models of the city. It's a little slow. You can see, looking up the river, you can see the bridges are all built in as well. Fairly high detail. Can show you City Hall. And we have another staff member, Jeff Keister, who is very skilled in 3D modeling and sometimes too much because he adds too much detail and the system sometimes chokes on it a little bit. So we have to tell him to bring it down. We can go back to the original purpose of building this initial application was for the Capitol view shed into Principal Park. See Principal Park here? And we even have the new batter's eye box out there if you see the tan structure. So that'll be important going forward. And you can see, if you go down to, say, the concourse level, you can see the view of the Capitol.
Do all parts of the stadium go to the public building?
We have, yep, so we have some defined, um, little slow. So here's from about, you know, just a little oriented. You can see the batter's eye box then is already mostly out of the picture from the Capitol by the time you get to the end of that kind of dugout almost. And if you get to the point where you start being obstructed by the outfield complex.
Will you be modeling potential projects that are going in to the Market District?
I'm sorry, close it.
Will you be modeling potential projects that are going into the Market District before they're built?
Um, yes, they have with the help of economic development. They've used it in the past for some of those. And to kind of view how it'll look in the setting and what it, if there's any obstruction and everything. And they might be able to touch on that more.
Yes, we will. In fact, we built it into our development agreement with them that their future developers need to submit their, um, future models of their buildings so that we can just drop it into this. And Eric, if you wanted to move, say to, well, there's the building that's under construction in the East Village, the new one. So we have been working, um, with our, with our staff as we get, um, as we're reviewing proposals to put in the new, um, to put in new projects as they are coming out of the ground. So for example, this is the model of the project that is going up at the corner of East Walnut and East Sixth in downtown. So we'll continue to do that to keep it, to keep it fresh and keep it current.
So before we vote on things, will we be able to see a model of them?
Sure. Yeah, we can do that. We can do that and we can include them in the information that you receive. We certainly will be using them with, uh, our Urban Design Review Board and Plan and Zoning Commission. And we can include it for, for you all as well. And if you ever have questions about the way that something fits into its context, we can, we can utilize it there. Thank you. Yep.
Yeah. So this is a good example. So here's, if we get the submission from the developers, it makes our lives a lot easier because then we don't have to spend the staff time modeling it as well. So if it's part of the submission, we can just take their existing one. As long as it's scaled correctly, we can just drop it right in. And you can see instantly, uh, the impact that it would have for that. And then, as Erin was saying, Parks is already, um, using it for some of the shadow analysis. So in here, you can actually, you know, define your time of year to get the right sun angle set up and then, um, your time of day. You can see on the fly kind of the shadow impact on the surrounding area. So if you had a big building going in next to a park or anything like that, you can see, depending on the time of year and the sun angle or what time of day, how that shadow would play an impact on the surrounding area. Holding real time. And we can, you know, zoom out and see some, you know, most of the downtown and kind of some of the surrounding downtown area is mostly completed at this point. A lot of the bridges and stuff like that, but it's still currently under development. So as we stretch out, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done on model as well. But you can see, here's the overlook from McRae Park and all that. So you can see how that looks going across the bridges. If there's any questions or...
You might have said this already and I'm sorry if I missed it. Um, where, are we able to find this, um, online currently?
Oh, I haven't talked about it yet.
Okay.
So yeah, this is, this is our initial in, you know, interior application, for economic development and some development to be able to do. We also have, uh, Des Moines Maps 3D. So if you're familiar with Des Moines Maps, there's a 3D version of it as well. There's a link up at the top of Des Moines Maps currently that'll get you to it. And then we also do have a public one that we have used to show, um, I think some developers have used it in the past. And we used it for ESRI to include in some of their publications. But it's just maps@dsmdotcity slash 3D. And that'll take you to a currently externally hosted one.
So as you're doing this for us, uh, how much of the city have you done? You said the downtown?
Yep.
From where to where?
Mostly the downtown, so I can hear. Good to show you.
Seven square miles downtown was the initial project.
Well, from the Capitol to 15th or, I mean, whatever.
Yeah.
Freeway south of.
We can show you, it's, it's mostly the extent of where we flew the point cloud is what has been most completed by now. So that's, you can see the extent there.
Are you going to do this for the whole city?
Yes. And so, the state has recently flown, um, LiDAR for the whole state and some, most of us available now. It's not quite as high a quality LiDAR that we flow for downtown, but that's more needed downtown. So we have the high level that we needed there. And so the rest of the city can be done with the state data. We can continue doing that going forward.
We can also go back and add more high detail after the fact for a small area, like a corridor that maybe has some development going in and add to it. That's what's beauty of this is it's very additive in a sense of the detail of the, the heights and things of that nature, but also the different applications. So we're talking with the departments right now about all the different applications that could be utilized. I mean, you got to just think of this as a visualization and you can visualize the services that different departments are able to provide, given this as well.
And knowing that, that we are much more interested in the detail than the state.
So we didn't get to quite looking at the 3D, uh, public version. Is it the same as this and just not as built out? Like when this is finished, will it be?
Yeah, it's the same datasets.
Okay.
Yep. So the, when you, you'll, the building models themselves are the same between the two.
Okay.
For the buildings at the city,
Yes.
the existing buildings for the development structures and things right now, we're not yet putting those in.
Okay.
So like that planned building you saw that was yellow, that won't be in there yet.
So that will be like case by case that you guys can show that to us? Okay.
I mean, I know GIS drawn, that's, does this have like ground utilities in here too?
So the Des Moines Maps 3D version, that's kind of our citywide application of it. So then that has the same datasets that are available on Des Moines Map. So for every, you know, department that they host in there, that's also in the 3D version. So you can see all the utilities and all that.
So it's just like multiple datasets layered upon it?
Yep.
The sewer system isn't yet modeled in 3D. Uh, we still don't have complete elevation dataset that, so, but you can view it in 2D. That's building it out, you know, there's, the future of this could be huge. Because a whole nother layer of data acquisition expectation that just.
Great work. No wonder you won the award.
So I noticed we don't have like topography. Like hills and things.
It is in there.
It is?
Yep. It's just.
So much smaller than the buildings. Yeah.
Even the Capitol Hill in regards of even it in a 3D viewer, it, you know, it doesn't, on a screen, doesn't come across quite as much.
It doesn't look like how you walk it.
Yeah, how it feels when you walk it.
Yeah.
But yeah, you can see here is an example of the hill coming up from that road. Um, yeah, it is all topographically accurate.
Thank you.
So another application you, you heard, uh, was for the private side. We can share this data with potential projects such that they get a feel not only the shadowing, but what a balcony, balcony view might look like, uh, in downtown as well with the elevations and whatnot. So there's, there's quite a bit of value to the private side of this as they're thinking through their projects.
And sorry, just for a clarifying question. The entire city is already built out in 3D maps, but is it going to be just like, there's more work that you guys are doing on that?
Yeah, the accuracy of the buildings will continue to get better.
Okay.
Because a lot of, outside of downtown now, a lot of that was just procedure, you know, pulled out of the LiDAR very, we'll say quickly, but, um, just programmatically instead of checking and stuff. So a lot of it needs to be in that analyzed and made better.
Okay.
So a lot of the residential areas are just a, um, you know, a rougher, say, box structure instead of, lacking roof detail would be.
We, we focused on landmark buildings, city-owned buildings, state buildings, um, and new development kind of start with the more advanced.
That makes sense to me.
Awesome.
All right. Anybody have any other final questions? Thank you very, very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks for bringing us up to date on that. Well, Mr. Manager, we're going to move on to the property nuisance process. And, um, I think I see our nuisance manager is coming up.
Mayor and Council, Sue Ann Donovan, Deputy Director of Neighborhood Services. And we're here today to talk about the public nuisance process. So, why do we have this program? Public nuisance properties diminish the value of nearby properties, destabilizes neighborhoods, poses a health risk to residents both mentally and physically, and it damages our fiscal stability as a local government. And I put up there just what's in our code about the health and safety and welfare of our community.
Sorry, sorry to ask a question so early. Can you clarify destabilized neighborhoods?
It creates, um, attractive nuisances for people to break into houses. It brings crimes through the vacant structure. Criminal activity tends to happen in and around vacant structures, which destabilizes the neighborhood, creates mental and health issues for residents that have to walk by it and interact with it. So our public nuisance process is found in chapter 60 of the code and it sets out the process for how we handle public nuisances. We have what we call a standard public nuisance. That's the most frequent action that we take. We do have the right to do an administrative removal when the damage is beyond repair. It is done with no court action, but council approval. So if something's really beyond saving, um, and is a real nuisance, we will take it to you first. We will tell the resident when they need to appear before council and then you will vote on whether it should go down or not.
Who makes that determination, Sue Ann? Is it a team? Is it you? Is it?
It's, it's a team. It's the supervisors and myself and the inspector gets to weigh in. Then we also have the emergency action where we can go with no court action at all. We sometimes do this if a structure is damaged and there's a wall standing, for instance, we'll have Public Works knock it in, so it's not a nuisance. We had a fire on Capitol last year that was a total, total loss down to the ground and we needed to get in there right away and get it cleaned up. So we did it under our emergency power.
So do you wait, I'm specifically thinking of the one property between, um, it's on Southwest 9th and it's, it's been burned. It's right next to Get and Go Across Street from Lincoln High School. Do we wait to see if the insurance is going to fix that? Or, I mean, what, what do we do? I mean, it's boarded up, it's burnt. I mean, it's, it's terribly blighted. And I just wondered, what, what type of, either administrative or emergency, can we, can we take action on certain properties like that?
I don't know that that, I haven't really paid much attention to that one in particular. I didn't think, I, nobody's brought it to me and said it's an emergency for administrative. It is boarded up. It's able to be boarded up.
Yeah.
You know, if it wasn't able to be boarded up and it was in such disrepair that we had to fence it, that would be a candidate for an emergency removal.
Okay.
Uh, things to remember as we get into this discussion. Staff does attempt to assist displaced persons finding safe and secure housing. We recently had one where a gentleman was living in a house that he shouldn't be in. And we, through staff and through ION, were able to discuss with him options. And we did successfully get him relocated so that he is safe while we go through the public nuisance process. Um, we have always attempted to do that through the years that I've been here. We, we get with elder services, we get with, uh, Veterans Affairs, we get with whoever could possibly be an asset to this person to find safe and secure housing. Um, with ION, we have another tool in our tool bed, get belt to try and get some help to people directly before we have to go through the nuisance action. We don't take title to property.
Uh, sorry, Sue Ann, um, there is no like requirement to find someone housing. Is that correct?
No, we don't have a requirement and we don't have any funding to secure housing, but we do feel it's, um, as staff, that it's our, our, I wouldn't say responsibility, but it is our, sort of our duty to try and help when we can find someone housing.
So what happens when, um, I, I have received information that, um, there have been people who have been displaced by this process and, um, were told essentially to go on to waiting lists that are, you know, months or years long and have ended up homeless because of this?
I am not aware of any individual instances. I do know that we send people to primary healthcare and that's another, uh, question and issue that I would like to discuss at a different, um, venue, at a different time, is what primary healthcare can do to help us better secure housing for people in this position.
But so there is, do we know how often people are found, are like actually put into, um, alternative housing when they're displaced by this process? Or do we know how often people are left homeless? Do we keep track of that?
I do not keep track of that. Um, so again, we don't take title to the property. We only get authorization to remove the nuisance. Uh, there will be a judgment lien in most cases on the property. And in those cases, it, it's pretty much assured that the judgment will exceed the value of the land. We are in, we are now processing public nuisance structures through blitz on blight, which gives us the money to take structures down. I think it's important to remember that before the local option sales tax became available to us so that we could remove structures, we had some structures on the backlog for up to 10 years before we could take them down. So as, as uncomfortable as this process and how long it takes, we are in a much better place than we were in the past where we had to wait years to find funding to take structures down.
We no longer have a backlog, is that correct?
We're working through the backlog. I think we've got everything that was on the backlog down and are now working through the new, the new structures.
Working through the new structures, does that, does that mean just that, um, more have come on and we're not able to process them as quickly as they come on?
No, we have taken care of the ones that were on the backlog before blitz on blight. Now we have four inspectors going out and working territories in the city to find, proactively find public nuisance structures to come into the program to either be renovated or removed.
So will, will the ION funding, um, sort of prevent houses from getting to that point of going on to the blitz on blight program?
That is the ultimate goal, yes. Um, there is an interactive map to properties on the city website, thanks to IT. I believe they also won an ESRI award for the interactive map. So we were very impressed with their ability to get our mapping, um, so that we can kind of show what we're doing.
Sue Ann, when we go back to that slide, just a quick question about not being able to take title of the property. So if we have, we take down the home, who, who still owns the property? Was it, who owned the, the house before? So we can't, so that's, we continue to have these vacant where we, where we have a potential for infill, but we can't get those to builders to build, is that correct?
Yes and no.
Okay.
We don't take title to the real estate. We get a judgment against the real estate. But we are talking about how we can move those properties from that ownership to private investors through a program. And we are developing that and I have some ideas on how to do that. We, as a, as a city and council, has to realize that you're going to waive those demo costs.
Right.
You're never going to get them back anyway. So we might as well waive them, get an infill built so that we have tax base and we start to secure the block. to secure the block faces and get some, get some stability in our neighborhoods again. Vacant lots are not much better than a vacant structure, somewhat better, because you don't have people going in and getting hurt and, you know, doing some things in structures they shouldn't, but vacant lots don't really help the health of a neighborhood either. So yes, to your point, we are working on a process so that we can more easily move those to private investors.
We have a timeline. I know there's, there's private developers, and then there's also the nonprofits that I know would be interested in a lot of those vacant, and I think that's a, that's a potential to where we're losing out on.
Right. Nonprofits are a little bit different, because we've always had a program that if the nonprofits want to come in and take title to the real estate, we will forgive the demo and any cleanup costs and any of our costs against it. It comes to you as an agreement, that you agree to waive it for a nonprofit to do the infill. We haven't had those for, I mean, you know, you have to realize that all of our extra sort of stuff that city staff does has sort of been put on the back burner due to COVID and trying to get staff back up, but we are in active conversations with Habitat, for instance.
You are? He, I mean, Friday he told me that he has no idea where any of the lots are in the city to build any type of infill.
We, well, one of the things that we're going to be able to do with the survey is get those lots mapped in front and center. I know that Habitat has been working with, with us on a couple of particular lots, so we can get him more information if he wants it. That's, you know, I mean, you can look at the Blitz on Blight map and see where all the 94 demos are, so.
You know, potential 27 brand-new homes with new services that we're going to have to provide. Providing him with 27 lots for free, I think would save the $4 million of infrastructure that he has to put in to build a new street and to build these homes in a potential area to where we could have market.
I'd be happy to talk to him and show him the mapping that we have and work through the individual lots and what it's going to take to get those in his hands.
Right.
But there's a way to, we're working on that, and we'll work with him directly if.
I think there's a potential to do that and to clean up a lot of the vacant lots.
Absolutely.
You know, because I mean, we're, depending on the weed commissioner to mow them, I mean, it just continues to add more cost where if we can waive the demolition cost, get it in, into someone's hands, and let them build a new home, that would, I mean, I believe that's the best.
And I think we should do it nonprofit and for-profit. I mean.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely, we should be doing it for both.
And I'm well aware of it.
Okay.
And it is something that we're working on. I mean, it's sort of a priority. I have the ideas, I have how I think we can do it. We just have to have, we just have to put it together in a package and bring it to you as a program so that you can listen to this discussion, you know, and I can do that in the future. Like, soon?
Yeah.
Soon?
Okay, good.
Can I ask one question? What about the homes that, like, I know, I'm aware of several homes where the people have died and the property is sold at a tax sale. How long do those people have to keep paying the taxes for the tax sale before they can become owners of the property?
I think it's a year and a half before it goes through the whole cycle where they can do a notice to redeem and then take the tax deed. We can do it, I mean, we have a tax deed program, we can do it faster because the county will let us jump ahead, and we've, we've done some of that, and we're continuing to look on expanding that program where we can jump ahead.
Okay. I just find that interesting because I, at a neighborhood meeting, they talked about a property, and I looked it up, and the guy has been dead since 2007. But when I went onto the tax page, it looks like it, all the taxes had been picked up, the taxes were being paid by someone, but I couldn't tell who was paying it.
Yeah, that sometimes happens, that someone will.
State, right?
Yes. Someone in the estate or a family member, or somebody who's picked up a tax certificate will pay it.
It wasn't like it's been paid. It's, I mean, it, it looked like it was, somebody had picked it up at a tax sale.
That could be.
And was paying the taxes. It just had a row of numbers.
And we can't.
It was not like.
Yeah, we can't speed that up, we can't intercede. That's the state-county process on tax certificates, moving to tax deeds.
But this was like seven years.
Again, that's not our.
Yeah, no, I know, but, but we could step in and force to redeem it?
No, we can't force anybody to redeem it.
But we take over the taxes.
But previously to someone else getting it, right?
We could, if it's a lot that we want, we can intercede and take the taxes faster from the county. But we don't often do that unless we have an investor who's interested in that specific lot for some reason.
Okay, like Wallace School.
Like, Wallace School was a.
Yeah, I know, that's not through a tax sale, but now somebody's interested in it.
Yep, and we're, we're working through that process with Wallace School.
Okay, yeah.
So in the case of the tax sales, not beneficial to get that under our control than to have people from out of state buy these properties and?
Well, we can't, we can't buy every tax sale.
I know, but is it not an advantage if an area that we know?
It is. If we know that we want that property for some particular reason, like it's on a Noden corridor.
Right.
Or it has, or we can fill in a block face by getting it, we know Habitat wants it, yes. We can strategize the ones that we want to take, and we're going to get better at that now that we have staff working directly on that particular process.
That's.
So we can be more agile and more upfront. But we just, this person has just started, so we have to give her a little time to kind of, you know, catch up with what we already took on tax deeds that we need to disperse, and then look, you know, sort of systematically at what we want. So again, that is a way for us to strategize what we want to do with a house or a lot before it becomes a nuisance. So we're working out that process and procedure also.
For a clarifying question, before, like, not talking about tax sale, we're not able to take the title to a lot, or we just choose not to?
No, we are not able to in the public nuisance process the way that we currently operate it. If we want to take title to a property, there is another Iowa Code section that we could serve notice and have the judge give us the property. But we have to be careful that we don't take properties we can't manage. So it doesn't do us any good to go out and take 10, 15 properties on speculation that at some point we can do something with it if we're not going to maintain and care for them, and that's a whole other budget item for the council to consider. Do we want a land bank? We are not set up to land bank right now. That is another discussion that if you want to have, we can bring forward how we would land bank properties for future development, but that's outside of this scope.
Or partner with Invest DSM if they were interested.
Or another nonprofit to land bank.
Other things, strategies, you're working on Invest DSM, on how can we do things differently?
And I'm, I'm a proponent of land bank, as long as you have.
Control.
Have the entity that can do it and maintain and manage it. We could not do that internally with our staff right now. We wouldn't be able to staff.
It would be a budgeting issue.
It's a budget issue.
Okay.
For both, the acquisition and then the management and holding of that, that's a whole, that's sort of outside of this process, but it is something worth discussing, and other communities successfully do land banking. But they generally set up a nonprofit, and the nonprofit holds it for future development.
I'm going to go ahead and express my interest for that right now.
I was going to say, council, if you like, we could schedule some time to talk specifically about the acquisition of these properties, because it is a balance, right? It's property rights. And so there still has to be this element of abandonment, nuisance, something that gives us the right to step in and take that property.
And go to the court and say, not only do we want the structure, we want the property. It's like a foreclosure. It's not really a foreclosure, because that's not what you'd call it, so Carol, you're not calling it a foreclosure. But it is us saying, court, we want, we want this piece of property, and we want control of the land and the structure. But it's taking control of the land, then you're going to have to have somebody to manage that land, mow it, snow, weeds, you know, make sure the structure doesn't become a nuisance so kids aren't, I mean, you take on some liability when you do that also.
Yeah. But I think it's an effective tool. And hold every discussion, like you said, Scott, on how, because I think it's some of the strategies we're doing in Invest DSM, it's just spreading it out, maybe in a different way.
I think the discussion's worth having, absolutely.
Yep. If we want to seriously redevelop property and get a balance.
Yep. So.
Back to.
Moving on. What conditions constitute a public nuisance? A lot of times, it's overall deteriorations, the roofs failing, the foundations, structural issues, interior ceilings and walls, windows and doors. Electrical plumbing, mechanical systems are compromised is a, is a big one. And of course, fire or water damage can create a nuisance.
I know we're moving through this slowly. Overall deterioration, can we get more specific on that? Like, are there specific guidelines that denote that? Is that what we're going into?
I believe this next slide will probably help answer that question. So you get into sagging roofs and roof leaks, and you get into foundation failures. Now, if you have a sagging roof and roof leaks, probably what's happening is the water's getting into the walls, and that compromises your electrical and plumbing systems, which is a fire hazard. Foundation failures, you have to determine whether the foundation can hold the load of the structure, or whether there's going to be a catastrophic failure to the foundation. Foundations will cause walls and ceiling cracks, uneven floors, you can have a damp subfloor, timber rot and insect damage, crumbling concrete, ceilings, exposed gaps in walls and floors, ill-fitting doors and windows, danger of collapse. A lot of times when you see a structure like depicted in the picture, it's an overall failure of the structure to be habitable due to the continued damage to the structure. Taken as a whole, sometimes that, in itself, is enough to say it's a nuisance. And I'm not saying that all nuisances can't be saved, so this is what we're starting with, is the, sort of the baseline of when we declare a public nuisance.
Sorry, you said.
They do. That's what I said. That's what they're paying for instead of roof repairs.
What was that? Oh, um, so you're saying all nuisance, we're not saying all nuisances can't be saved. When you're saying that, are you saying that we declare public nuisance and we don't always take it down? Or are you saying?
Correct.
Okay, so what do we do in those situations?
Well, people will come in and do a renovation agreement with us so that they can renovate the structure.
But if we don't find someone to do a renovation agreement, what do we do?
It'll end up going down.
Like, when it becomes unstable or right away?
No, it has to go through the process, which we'll get into.
Okay.
From, we're starting at the beginning of the process right now. This is when it starts, when we determine it's a nuisance, and it's uninhabitable in its current condition. So roof structure failing, it can have missing or damaged shingles, damaged underlayment, holes in the roof, damage to soffits or fascia. Again, allowing water into the structure is the main damage to the structure due to a failing roof. Foundation failing, again, cracks and deterioration, missing sections, it's not structurally sound to hold the load, and it's allowing water and vermin into the structure. Walls and ceiling damage, again, holes, water damage, there can be fire damage, or it's just structurally unsound in and of itself when the walls are starting to fail. Damaged or missing electrical service, missing wires, faulty wiring, damaged wiring, missing switch plates, outlet covers. Again, these are fire hazards that can create a fire within the structure, and we want to stop it from starting a fire. Damaged or missing furnace system, again, water and smoke damage, missing furnace, missing or damaged ducting, unit not working, maybe it's not vented correctly. Plumbing, again, improper venting, leaking pipes, broken or missing plumbing, improper installation.
Looks like.
And then fire and flood damage, of course, is a big one. So let's get a little bit into process, and I'm going to tell you, this is, the process I'm explaining is very, very simplified. When I did a flow chart of the public nuisance process from start to finish with all of the different directions it could go, all the things that we'd have to loop or change or come back to, it was six feet long when we printed it all out, because of all the different things that can happen pre-council, in, in, in the court system, or after we even have a decree. So we inspect the structure and determine it's a public nuisance. We take pictures, we board it up if necessary, we put a placard on the structure saying it's unsafe for occupancy, and that it has been declared a public nuisance. We prepare a notice of violation, we locate the property owners and any legal interest holders, so that would include the owner, contract buyer, mortgage holder, anybody who's put a mechanic's lien or something against the property. And then we notice, we serve the notice on the people personally. That means that we hire somebody to hand them the notice of violation. Whether it's in-state or out-of-state, everybody gets handed the notice of violation. The violation notice gives them 30 days to comply, and then if nobody does anything during that 30 days, then a roll call is going to council. Sometimes, in that period of time, owners will be out there actively working on the property, and we'll pull it before it even goes to council and enter a renovation agreement. So you're not seeing the ones that we've pulled where somebody's actually contacted us and we're working on a renovation agreement. There's no reason to sue somebody if they're going to work on it.
Can I ask, since you mentioned that, what about situations where, like, I've heard multiple times where there's materials on the premises that have been taken through a public nuisance process to renovate?
No, we take materials stored on property through the.
Through a different process?
Through the junk and debris process.
Okay, so if someone, there have been times when materials have been taken and it has been declared a public nuisance, one, I'm not sure what order.
Well, there's two things going on there. One, people sometimes will say that they're storing things outside for renovation. If wood and materials are left out for a number of years outside in the weather unprotected, they are no longer going to be good products to be put into a structure. So they will get notice, regard, we don't know what they're doing with that material. We have no idea. So we'll give them a notice of violation that they need to clean up their, their material that are illegally stored outside. They have a right to an appeal, they have a right to move it into a structure, they have a right to take care of it in a, in a, in a good fashion, that, that maintain it. If they don't, then we're going to go clean it up. But they get notice, they get a right to a hearing, an appeal hearing, and if they don't do anything, then we go clean it up.
Is that a situation also where it's public, or it's personally served?
No, that is served by certified mail return receipt requested and regular mail.
Okay, thank you.
So anyway, after it goes to roll call, council approves legal action, and then we get into the court process. So a petition is filed in court, seeking an order that directs abatement and authorizes the city to demolish in the event that abatement is not achieved by the owner. Abatement can be renovation or removal. Either way, that would abate the nuisance. The outcome can be a consent decree, court order after trial, or a renovation agreement. So a consent decree. City enters an agreement with the owner where we, everybody agrees they're going to do this, this, and this. Generally, it's, we're going to repair it within three to six months, whatever. They think the time they need is. The judge will sign a court order. The city is in the court order, authorized to complete the demolition if the repairs aren't completed, and the cost of the action entered as a judgment, and the judge, in most cases, is going to be lean on the title. So a court order decree, that's when we go to trial, and we have testimony, and then the judge determines the outcome, and the judge enters an order, generally giving the amount of time the judge believes is necessary to abate the nuisance, and also an order that allows the city to remove the structure and the judgment lien. Or we can enter a renovation agreement at any time in the process. So the owner's going to come to us and say, I want to do a renovation, I have proof of financial ability, we confirm there's financial, finances available, and we enter a timeline to complete the process, and we enter into the agreement with the parties. And if necessary to secure financing, we'll agree to dismiss a legal action. So a couple we're working on now with NFC, in particular, we've done it with other lending institutions. NFC says we're going to lend them $100,000, and we say, yeah, that'll do it. But NFC doesn't want a loan on a property with a court action pending, so we will enter an agreement with the owner, NFC dismissed the action, NFC in most cases will agree, and the other banks that we've worked in, that they will take title and do the renovations should the party not be able to complete it for some reason. So those have been real successful, we're willing to do them. I hope that word gets out to the community, because there seems to be a feeling in the community that once the placard goes up, the city's going to take it down, there's nothing we can do about it. Well, that's not true. We're very, becoming very successful in entering renovation agreements, and it's working for us, and we're getting those houses repaired.
I was just going to ask, on our public nuisance list that we have.
I was just going to ask, on our public nuisance list that we approve, what percentage do you have enough record or time yet to say they've entered into the agreement? Majority are getting, like 90% are getting renovated, or 50% versus?
You know, I have been running into this lately, is we've got to do record-keeping on that because I do want to be able to say that. I think about 5% right now are just going through the renovation agreement, not the consent decree. But I think we can increase that number as we get the word out that we're willing to do renovation agreements. A lot of times, what will happen is somebody else will buy it, and they'll step into the place of the owners. And then we have rehabbers out there that are starting to flip these. And so that's working well for us also. I wish the Blitz on Blight map, we had also had in there renovations completed. But at the time we did it, the whole thing was, everybody wanted to know how Blitz on Blight money was being spent, and how many were going down, and how much money was going into the program. So we need another way to catch the renovation agreement.
I was just wondering, because I think sometimes, to your point, everybody thinks it's going to go down, when there's still opportunity to save it.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, and I think as we've progressed, right? We've gotten structures that were on the list for 10 years that obviously there was going to be no saving, a structure that had been a nuisance for a decade. But we're at the point where structures are probably, the economics make more sense to save them than they do to tear them down because there's still enough that is good with these structures.
If you can catch it when the bones are still good, and there's still enough value in the structure itself, you can move those to renovations. The ones, to your point, that are so dilapidated or sat too long, and the interior damage through the water, and, you know, the mold and the vermin and, you know, all that has gotten so great that the money just won't work, you know? So I think catching them early has helped us save some more.
A question about the placards. Is the language on there our language, or is it state language?
It's our language.
So we would be able to put on to the placards something about a renovation agreement? Like, there's an opportunity?
Yeah.
Okay, that might help get the word out.
That's a good idea. So after the decree, we go out and we inspect for compliance. If the property is not complied, we have to complete a historic review. And then we send the request to engineering to bid the demo. They have to do asbestos abatement when they can. So they'll go in, they hire a company to go in and take the asbestos out. Now, if the structure is so far damaged that they can't safely take the asbestos out, we have to treat the whole structure as an asbestos demo, and it costs about double. So, because they have to wet it, they have to, you know, put it in, you know, bags and take it. So then the structure goes down. Again, we don't take title. But if after the decree, there's progress toward compliance, we'll grant extensions of time, we'll talk to the owners, we'll give them whatever we can to try and get that renovation completed. Especially now with the supply chain issues people are going through. We're really cognizant of the fact that they can't get the windows, they can't get this, you know? We need to work with them on the extensions.
One more thing on that. If there's, if somebody has been made homeless by being, you know, kicked out because of an abated property, that limits our ability to have progress toward compliance.
Pardon?
I'm saying that we, if there's progress, we were looking for progress towards compliance. But if somebody, if this is their home and they are displaced by this process, and they're then homeless, it would make it much harder for them to get progress towards compliance. So I wonder if we should just be considering, like, funding towards rehousing during this process so that we can get more progress towards compliance? Like, how often, we don't have...
It doesn't happen very often that we displace someone in a public nuisance.
It doesn't happen often we displace someone?
It doesn't happen very often at all. Usually they're vacant before long.
But we don't have a different process for when they're, when someone is in, besides looking for and giving them resources?
We try to help them get a place to live. We do not have any funding for that effort. That would have to come from council.
Yes, that's what I'm saying to council, is that I would think it'd be...
We work with rebuilding together, and we'll go in and save some of those. They did that.
And I think to your point, I think to your point, as Ion gets its feet under it and is more agile and gets going, they have worked on some properties in conjunction with Habitat and Rebuild, where we do the outside, they do the inside, and then the person can stay there. It just depends on the level of deterioration, whether we feel like they can safely be there or not.
My point is, while it's happening that that place is being rebuilt, somebody doesn't have somewhere to stay, and I think that we should consider funding for, like, having someone have a place to stay.
That's a different conversation we would need to have because the individual would either qualify for potential housing assistance, which really then is a question of why are they owning a house?
Okay, well qualifying for housing assistance doesn't mean that you get it either.
Say again?
Qualifying for housing assistance does not mean that you get it. And if the city is causing displacement, then the city should be taking care of that while, like, I think that it would just improve our progress towards compliance.
Well, I would say the city is not causing them to be displaced.
And there's no regulations that require it.
Their house is deteriorated to the point where they can't live there. It's unsafe.
Right.
But is it safer to live under a dangerous structure, or is it safer to live on the street?
I don't know of anybody living on the street as a cause of the public nuisance.
I do.
Then I would like to know who it is and the addresses.
Okay.
So we can talk later. So general timelines, about 60 to 90 days from the notice to the roll call. That's because we have to personally serve each party that has a party in interest. So in order to find out who has an interest, we order a title certificate. Legal reviews us, tells us who else needs, besides the reported title holder or contract buyer, needs to be notified, we get the notice out to them. If it's a bank out of state, we have to get it served out of state. So that can take, you know, some time just to get everybody served. So it's about six months to two years from the filing in court to a decree. If we get a default decree, it can happen within six months, if, or a year, if nobody answers in court and says they want to have a trial. We should note that trials are now being set into the spring of 2023. So if somebody does file an answer, we're getting trials in 2023. This is nothing that staff, legal or otherwise, can do anything about. This is the court calendar. Most of their docket is for criminal cases. The next biggest chunk is domestic cases. And then we get, you know, what, a little bit left on the docket for civil cases. You know, obviously, we want to have the criminal cases, you know, handled because they have, you know, due process and right to speedy trial. So we get them on the docket as fast as we can. If we can get a consent decree while it's pending for trial, we try to get a consent decree. But we're at the mercy of the court's docket. It's, right now, it's about three months for demolition to occur after it's sent to engineering for bidding. They say, once they get through kind of where they're at right now, it's probably going to be a 60-day turnaround. They did have to rebid their bid packages because of some discrepancy in the bids and what it mandated the contractors to do. There was some, you know, discrepancies, so they redrafted the bid, tightened down the specifications so the demo contractors know exactly what they need to do. So right now, there are 20 properties on the engineering list scheduled to be taken down. And if anybody's interested in the list, and the timelines, I can certainly send that to them. Okay? Okay, I'll just send it to all of you so you have the same information on the properties. Right now, on the Blitz on Blight map, which we're updating to bring it current, and at some point, we want to have it interactive, so it just, you know, when we hit a benchmark, it populates it. We have 26 pending, 138 approved for legal, 30 decrees, 34 in rehab, and 94 have been taken down under Blitz on Blight. So delays in implementation of Blitz on Blight, I'll tell you, you know, it was kind of a rough start. We had COVID, we had people retiring, and then people moving around staffing, and then we had Intergov. For staffing, right now, we do, we are four Blitz on Blight inspectors. They are established, they're trained up, and they're out there working for, they each have a fourth of the city. So we're not going to let them move around within the organization. They're going to stay on Blitz on Blight until we are done with Blitz on Blight, and then they can move into a territory. So our mapping survey will help us identify garages and some other things that we aren't getting complaints on, but we can now proactively go out after the survey.
Sue, and is this completely complaint-based?
It has been to date, complaint and fire. We get fire reports, so we go out and look at all the fires. We have started to move into a proactive approach. They're asked to look when they're out there proactively now and try and identify them themselves. And then when the survey results come back and we have things that are ranked pretty low, we'll be able to go and take a look at those. Again, now that we have Ion, we're going to look at them from two different avenues. Is it a public nuisance, or can Ion go in and maybe stabilize it without it being a nuisance? So again, the goal is for Blitz on Blight to go away and Ion take a bigger role in saving structures up front. That's the long-term goal.
Are the inspectors separated out, like, essentially by ward?
No.
You said one-fourth of the city each.
No, they're not separate. Well, no, I don't think they are.
Okay.
You know, we just do some scatter mapping and see where we need the most boots on the ground.
Gotcha.
You know, if there's an area of town that's relatively new and built out, we don't want people driving Blitz on Blight cars up and down those streets. That's, you know, a waste of time. So we kind of put them where we have the most need.
Okay.
Intergov is now, for Blitz on Blight anyway, working. They can manage it, get things done. The process is going through, so finally, Intergov is working for us for Blitz on Blight. Events that delay the process, change in ownership is a big one. You can have somebody just deed it away in the middle of whenever, and then we have to find that person, do the notice, figure out if we need to dismiss the action, if we can amend the petition. There's a lot of different decisions made at the time of a transfer. Tax deed means that we have to start the process over. So the tax deed eliminates our judgments. A sheriff's deed, in most times, eliminates our judgment or our court action.
What is a sheriff's deed?
If somebody goes through a foreclosure and they bid the property at a sheriff's sale, and then the new owner gets a sheriff's deed, or, yeah, sheriff's deed. So it's the end of a foreclosure, should the mortgage company decide to actually sell it. So again, if we can't locate an owner or a legal interest holder, we got to publish notes in the paper. That takes a while, and you have to realize that both the notice is published and the lawsuit. So there's two publication timelines that we have to go through, and that spreads it out. And then again, the trial court schedule. Things that work, we're improving case management in Intergov. We're going to use the survey results to locate nuisance structures. We're going to start working on commercial structures and nodes and on corridors to start stabilizing our nodes and corridors. And again, we're working with Ion to identify structures that can be saved. Any more questions?
I'll ask one. When someone decides that they think they can save a structure, and they have to show financials that they can make it work, I would think that with some of these buildings, you have to have lots of contingency dollars, just... Is that part of what you figure in? I know that there's a structure at I-235 exit ramp, and I think that's 19th, and that that has been a process that they remarkably working on that. But when you looked at the financial ability, there's just got to be a lot of hidden things that...
Yeah, it's up to them to pretty much tell us how much they need, and then we look at it. A lot of times, we'll say, bring in your contractor's bids, electrical, plumbing, mechanical. If you're going to put a roof on it, what's your estimation for the roof? That one is a unique structure that we actually sent it for historic review to take down. It was that close. And the historic people that were reviewing it came back and said, you need to save this house. At the same time, somebody came in and bought it, so it just all kind of worked together. So he's renovating it, the exterior is buttoned up now, which before it wasn't. So we're giving extensions for them to complete it. I don't think anybody wants to see that one go down, and it luckily is being saved.
So the timetable on a building to save it and to get it occupied again could be lengthy depending upon...
It could be two or three years, especially with supply chain. But, you know, patience is worth it if you can save that house. I mean, it's not hurting anybody now. It's, you know, it's not an attractive nuisance. It's buttoned up. You know, I'm not really worried about it.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So you went through kind of like what we look for in a public nuisance, and you said the inspectors, a team of inspectors and supervisors, and you decide if it's a nuisance or not?
No, the inspectors decide if it's a nuisance.
The individual inspector who sees it?
And they take it to their supervisor who reviews it. And that's the collaboration and the review within staff. It's brought to my attention, if it's so badly damaged that somebody says it should be an administrative or an emergency removal, and then we determine which direction it should go.
Yeah, see, just going back on that, the standard public nuisance is not council-approved? Or it goes straight to the courts? Or sorry, can you clarify that?
The standard public nuisance process is the one I went through. So they get notice. If nothing happens, it comes to a roll call for you to approve legal action, and then it goes into the court system.
The administrative is one that comes to us in a different way?
Yeah, it's a quicker timeline for the administrative removal, and then there's no follow-up court action. So for instance, if I was going to do an administrative removal, we would say the date set for hearing is October, first meeting in October, right? We would put in the notice that they have to appear at the first meeting in August to contest the action.
Otherwise, we're just doing it.
If they don't show up, then council can approve an immediate removal after that. But they have a right to a hearing in front of the council.
Gotcha.
And we notify that personally, that they can come. None, probably five years, I don't think you've done any. It's very sparingly used, and it's only if we believe that there is no money is going to save this, and it is such an attractive nuisance to the neighborhood that we need to get it out of there. But we don't lead with that. I mean, that's extraordinary. Yep. Yep. Now, if it's burnt to the ground and we need to get it cleaned up, like the one on Capitol, we'll do an emergency. We had a property, I think it's on Maple, that the front, you know, we were in the public nuisance process, and somebody torched it, and the front porch was so unsafe that we needed to take it off. So as an emergency action, we hired a company just to remove the front porch. And I know it's being renovated now, but we had to get that front porch down.
So when the inspector goes, are they able to go inside most of the time or no? Just outside, inside?
Yep.
Okay.
Unless it's unsafe, I'm not going to send them in if it's so fire damaged or the floors are falling in. If they can determine it's a nuisance outside without going in, and it's unsafe to go in, I don't want them to go in.
Okay, so priority of safety with inspectors.
Correct.
So what standards are they inspecting based on?
The standards I outlined this morning.
I just, some of it is just like, I don't know where the determination is coming from that determines that it would not be a savable structure. Like, are we looking at building code? Are we looking at, like, where do these standards come from?
Chapter 60.
Chapter 60 is where the standards come from, okay. And then what is our liability? Like, we remove people from structures if they're living in an unsafe structure. Like, what is our liability there?
On the rare occasion,
Yes.
very rare that somebody is asked to leave, I do not believe we have liability. If we leave them in there and something happens to them, I believe that we have liability.
Okay.
We cannot leave people in unsafe structures that we know of.
Okay, thank you.
And if I might just add here, we do have liability because a lot of times, all parties that could have a potential exposure to, for liability will be included in lawsuits. So let's say there's a loss of life, and it was found that the city was aware of the structure, given kind of the deep... deep pocket theory, since the city is funded, that likely will put the city in the inclusion in a lawsuit. Doesn't mean they're going to win. It's just that we have to be very concerned about the consequences.
Okay, thank you for that.
And personally, I would have problem living with myself if I knew somebody was damaged or hurt in a structure that we knew was a public nuisance.
Yes.
I'm not going to personally take that on.
No, I understand that.
And often, Sue Ann, I don't want to say often, but on occasion, some of these structures, which have been partially abandoned, are sometimes occupied by other homeless people. And we, I would guess, have some sort of a fear that they would be injured in there, you know, if the thing was beyond being safe, and now we have, you know...
Well, not only that, you're putting your first responders at risk.
Invaded it.
You know, if you have somebody who's living in a house, they start on fire, then your first responders are at risk. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that are at play here. You know, the kids in the neighborhood that are going in there playing with matches, the homeless people going in and starting fires to stay warm. I mean, those are hazards, but also our first responders. We have to protect them.
Because I think all of us have gotten, well, I don't say all of us, but some of us have gotten calls from in neighborhoods where, you know, there's people living in here, and we know the owners, you know, essentially have left or abandoned it or have just walked away from it.
And we'll go out and have them leave, and then we'll board it back up to, you know, to help keep them out.
Then on occasion, somebody rips those boards off and they go right back in.
Absolutely. Happens a lot.
That's my biggest concern on crosswalks.
Yep.
They go back to school tomorrow.
Yep. I'll take a look at that one.
That we need to. It's been at least a couple months.
Yeah.
I don't property, so they should have, you know, figure out what's...
Well, if somebody has insurance, under state law, the insurance company is supposed to give us a fire escrow and hold it against the demolition. A lot of insurance agents don't know that. And so if we know there's an insurance company, we will reach out and say, is this damaged to the extent that you're going to give us the fire escrow? But it...
Both of us, I mean, I still got this word until January 1st.
The problem with the escrow letter is that we hold off filing a suit for 180 days. So, you know, it's a, you know, it's a time thing, too. I mean, but I will look into that one.
Just for clarity purposes, did the words change when the vote went through and when the state approved it? Is that correct?
It's effective January 1st.
Of this upcoming year?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right, anybody have anything else? Sue Ann, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation. Mr. Manager, any final comment? All right, we'll see your buddy about 4:45. I think we may have a proclamation today. And we'll get started with our regular meeting at 5 o'clock. Until then, have a great day. This meeting is adjourned.